All right, good evening, everybody. The time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a proposed add-on number 12, which is to authorize the treasurer to execute legal agreements necessary to collect the 2023 school property taxes for parcels within Macomb Township on behalf of Chippewa Valley Schools, New Haven Community Schools, Utica Community Schools, Lance Cruz Public Schools, Macomb Intermediate School District, and Macomb Community College, and establish the collection fee for 2023 summer taxes at $3.57 per parcel pursuant to the terms of Section 1611 of Public Act 333 of 1982. And also a proposed add-on number 13, which is the request to purchase two KME pumpers in the amount of $1,708.
Motion to approve the agenda as with the additions?
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the agenda as corrected. Members, please vote. That motion, that motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to item three, approval of the bills, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Trustee Cusmano supports the motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the bill run. Members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting minutes from October 12, 2022, and the special meeting minutes from October 17, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from October 12 and from October 17. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, this is for agenda items only. If there's anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak, they may digitally raise their hand. Anyone present wishes to speak, they may approach the microphone. I don't see anybody present. Is there anybody remotely wishing to speak at this time? All right, no one wishes to speak at public comment, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Your support?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Clerk Posey, to approve the consent agenda items. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now on to new business, item eight is a request for the township supervisor to sign two Crown Castle agreements and authorize a payment of $11,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Johnson?
All right, good evening. So with the AMI system, there was 11 poles going to be installed on throughout the township. These two sites have cell towers that we could use in lieu of installing an extra pole. We can also get additional height on our, with on our tower, which will, with our antenna, which will allow us to gain, you know, better access to the signals that the R900s are receiving. So this agreement will allow us to utilize Crown Castle's two cellphone towers, both at Fire Station 1 and 2, and I'm just asking for your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion?
I had one question.
Sure.
This application for $11,000, can you just kind of elaborate on what that is?
Yeah, basically, it's just allowing them, they want to make sure, it's them reviewing to make sure our components can work on the tower. It's them going to the FAA to make sure that everything on there, because they have to go through FAA for the regulations, this is a formality, they want to make sure the components work, doesn't interfere with everything else on their tower, so that future growth of their tower, it doesn't interfere with those type of things, there's a lot of involvement.
So that's like a lot of their costs and things as well, it's not just like, here, give us 11 grand to be able to do this?
Correct, correct.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may just add on, Crown Castle, these, they actually pay us lease payments to utilize that site at Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2, and as part of that lease agreement, we reserve the right to utilize their poles in some fashion in the future at no cost. So typically, we would be paying a monthly fee to, to lease these, lease the spot on the, on the pole. Fortunately, with those lease agreements, we will have no additional costs other than the initial application fee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the supervisor to sign off on two Crown Castle agreements and authorize a payment of $11,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is, is there is a request to approve the purchase of 13 iPads and OtterBox covers from Verizon in the amount of $9,067.24.
Move to approve.
Support. Mr. Johnson?
All right, so these tablets will allow our department and our team to work remote, I mean, obviously, they are in the field remotely, but it'll allow them to access all of our blueprints and files remotely, now that we're digitizing, so they can utilize LaserFISH and GIS at this point in the field, not having to come back and look at blueprints, tap cards, things of that nature. Moving forward, it'll allow us the ability to improve our work order system, maintenance of, you know, the buildings and the infrastructure, and this is the starting point to get that stuff moving, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for Mr. Johnson, or any discussion? Hearing none, motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the purchase of 13 iPads and OtterBox covers from Verizon in the amount of $9,067.24. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 10 is a request to approve Public Works to have FISH back, extend the sanitary sewer hydraulic modeling meter, modeling metering one additional month in the amount of $9,970. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Johnson, one more time.
Yep, and so with this, we've been monitoring the flows of our sanitary sewer since April. What the goal is, is to watch for inflow infiltration, or we call INI, to see how that impacts our system. Due to the lack of sufficient rain to kind of look at that data, we're asking for another month to see if this, if November would be able to give us enough information to make a sound decision moving forward. So we're just asking for one more month to have the meters, watch the meters, go through the data, and then pull the meters at the end of November, and that's what this cost represents.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve Public Works to have FISH back, extend the sanitary sewer hydraulic modeling metering one additional month in the amount of $9,970. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to item 11 is a request to adopt the resolution to implement healthcare insurance plan for the calendar year 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Jeff, were you going to present tonight, or was I doing it?
We're doing it.
I'm doing it.
I can do it. It's not yours.
I know, but I thought maybe you'd do it for me. So before us tonight, the township has gone through with our healthcare insurance agent, all the available options. This year, there's a new plan that will allow the HMO to bypass referrals. So we are in effect going to adopt a different plan than we currently have. It's effectively the same in every other way, it's actually a slightly better plan, better coverage for our employees. And with this plan, we are still under the hard cap, as we adopted about a month ago. Other than that, all the consistent, so it's consistent with for current employees. Additionally, with this, we are moving to Medicare, is it Medicare Advantage?
Advantage Plus Plan, yeah.
Advantage Plus Plan for all of our retirees, which again is a more robust coverage, and it actually costs, will cost us significantly less.
So we talk about retirees that are 65 and plus, so there's going to be a few that are still are under 65, but majority will be 65 and plus.
So, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that we are, again, paying a little bit more for the new plan for the employees that allows them to see specialists more easily, but we're still under the hard cap, and that with the retirees by re, I guess you could say reorganize that plan, that we're actually going to save money on the retirees. The net effect of these two will be lower healthcare costs for the township.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So I'll just add real quick to the, the new BCN, it's called a Point of Service Plan, POS. The difference, because people are asking me, what's the difference between that now and the PPO? So the PPO, the doctors are covered at like 98%, where the, this BC, BCN plan's going to be covered at like 95%, so it's going to be very similar going forward.
Very similar. Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, how much of a net savings?
Did we have a total?
For the retirement plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're talking $300,000 plus.
Savings?
Savings.
Okay.
The new HMO plan is only going to cost us about $4,000?
$4,000 more annually.
That's across all the employees?
Overall, yes.
Well, congratulations, that's good news. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Okay, there's no more questions? Clerk Posey, will you call the roll? I'm sorry, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Moving on to item 12. Looking for a motion to authorize the treasurer to execute legal agreements necessary to collect the 2023 school property taxes for parcels within Macomb Township on behalf of Chippewa Valley Schools, New Haven Community Schools, Utica Community Schools, Lance Cruz Public Schools, Macomb Intermediate School District, and Macomb Community College, and to establish the collection fee for the 2023 summer taxes at $3.57 per parcel pursuant to terms of Section 1 of 1611 of Public Act 333 of 1982. Can you repeat that? No, I can't.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every year, we set the amount that we collect, that we charge to collect the taxes for our school districts. That amount, we kept it the same last year, so we went a, a year without any sort of inflationary increase, but as we're all aware, inflation has been a factor. So this cost represents an 8% increase from what we charged last year. Mind you, there was no inflationary increase last year, despite the fact that we had inflation. So I guess you can say they got one year without an inflationary increase, but I think it's responsible for us to adjust it annually at what is the state inflation rate. So this is same as last year with an inflationary increase, effectively.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, was this negotiated with these tax districts?
It was not negotiated, they have a choice to either contract with us or, or not. I went through an extensive discussions with them two years ago, because the price had not been changed in several decades. And so we did extensively negotiate two years ago. Last year, we kept the price the same, this year, we're doing the inflationary increase, but there's no requirement under state law for them to contract with us. We're setting what our price is, then we're going to send them a proposed contract, and they will decide whether or not they want to contract with us to collect the taxes.
Do, do you have any inclination what their response will be to an 8% increase?
I, we're still less than what Shelby Township charges per parcel, so I don't imagine that there's going to be much objection to an inflationary increase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as, as many of the board members in the public is aware, I'm the vice chairperson of the Macomb Community College Board of Trustees Tax District. As such, I'll be abstaining from this vote, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to authorize the treasurer to execute the legal agreements necessary to collect the 2023 school property taxes for all the parcels of Macomb Township, for all the affected school districts, and establish the collection fee for the 2023 summer taxes at $3.57 per parcel pursuant to the terms of Section 1611 of Public Act 33 of 1982. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Clerk Posey? Yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes.
And Trustee Cusmano has abstained.
Abstained.
That motion is approved. Six, six, yeah, we just, I don't need to repeat it. Okay, moving on. Next item is a motion to approve the purchase of two KME pumpers in the total amount of $1.7 million and $800, and authorize Chief Phillips to sign the final build print and contract at the conclusion of the pre-construction conference. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase two KME pumpers. The pumpers will replace our 2002 and 2003 pumpers that are currently housed at Stations 2 and 3. They will respond to all fires and will be outfitted with the proper equipment to respond to vehicle accidents and medical calls if needed. Both pumpers will be licensed as EMS non-transport vehicles with the state of Michigan. The pumpers will have seating for four personnel, will be outfitted with a 1,500 gallon per minute pump, and will carry 750 gallons of water. They'll provide our firefighters with the latest in safety and technology, and the goal is to have them in service for 20 years. In September of 2020, an apparatus replacement committee was formed and tasked with developing the specifications for the new apparatus. The committee consisted of three full-time firefighters, three paid-on-call firefighters, along with Deputy Chief Monroe and myself. Committee spent a significant amount of time discussing and researching what they thought the apparatus should include. Several site visits were made to departments in the area that had recently taken delivery of new pumpers. This past July, we worked with the purchasing specialist, and the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program received proposals from three different manufacturers. Proposals and equipment from E1, KME, and Rosenbauer were evaluated. Upon completion of the evaluation, the selection committee, consisting of firefighter Denali, firefighter Muzinski, Deputy Chief Monroe, myself, and Supervisor Viviano, determined KME and Rosenbauer both met the specifications that had been developed by the Apparatus Replacement Committee. Pricing ranged from $1,670,000 to $1,703,047. If approved, a pre-construction conference will be held at the factory in Holden, Louisiana, to review and confirm the specifications. At the conclusion of that meeting, and upon final signature of the build print, KME will provide to the township the performance bond in the total amount as required. In addition to the pre-construction conference, a mid-inspection and a final inspection of the pumpers will be conducted at the factory prior to delivery. Delivery is expected to be 650 to 670 days after the conclusion of the pre-construction conference. The apparatus will be delivered to Station 1 under their own power, and once accepted, at Station 1, payment will be made. There are no funds due until both pumpers are delivered and accepted. As previously stated, the current engines have been on the replacement schedule since they were new, and both have had a 20-year service life. The purchase of these are included in the Fire Improvement Fund and will be budgeted when the fiscal year budget is developed. The department has funded the replacement each year and will be able to pay cash for both when they're delivered and accepted. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chief, you mentioned that these will be part of an upcoming budget, because we're not paying for them until delivery, but did they, did the cost of the equipment come in within the range of expectations when, when the proposal was originally put forward? Is it substantially higher than originally thought, like many other things have gone, or?
Over the last few years, with the pricing that had increased that we've seen, I had actually budgeted approximately $900,000 for each, so they came in a little bit lower than what we had anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Quick question. Go on, Trustee Chairman. The two remaining trucks, once we get these new ones in service, what are we going to do with them?
We'll, we'll keep one as a reserve engine, the other one will be sold following the township purchasing policies.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I downloaded the agenda several hours ago, and it was version 2. Is there a reason why this expenditure did not show up on version 2 agenda?
We added this Monday?
Monday at 4:30.
So we met, so the selection committee met to do our final review. It was determined to add it to this agenda, because we would have to wait, we have a three-week gap to the next meeting, and we're trying to hit some deadlines. Chief himself is not going to be at the next meeting, so we wanted to make sure we got it, this process started with the manufacturer as soon as possible. It's already, you know, looking like almost a year and a half lead time. We don't want to extend it one more month.
So my question is, is it time-sensitive, so would not be appropriate, or in the best interest of the township, to put it over to the next meeting because of these issues that you just mentioned?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion?
Just one question, in here, and you said it'll be delivered under its own power. Do they drive them from Louisiana?
Correct, they, no, they have to be driven the entire way under their own power.
So we get them with 2,000 miles on them, or?
Correct, which is a pretty good break-in, and if any issues that happen.
All right, thank you.
If there's no more questions, motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the purchase of the two KME pumpers for the total of $1,708,000, and authorize Chief Phillips to sign the final build print and contract at the conclusion of the pre-construction conference. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Phillips.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comment, again, this is for non-agenda items. If anyone wishes to participate remotely, please digitally raise your hand. Anyone present, please approach the microphone. I do not see anybody present, anybody remotely. Okay, so we're going to move on for public comment. On to board comments, Trustee Lucido.
Just a couple of quick things, one, whoever was involved in the insurance negotiations with the agent, the savings is always welcome, so I do appreciate your hard work on that. And also, I attended the Halloween Hoopla earlier this week, or was it last week? And the Parks and Rec Department did an excellent job again. I saw a bunch of families having a great time, and I got to help Charlie hand out some pumpkins, so it was a terrific time, so thank you.
Great, Trustee Nevers?
I have no comments this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver?
Basically, what Pete was saying, it probably took a lot of work tracking down an insurance policy and finding the best for our buck, and, you know, again, I say this all the time, we sit up here, we read the data, and we think it's okay, great, but there's a lot of effort that goes into these things, and again, thank who was all ever involved. And again, thank Pete for helping me pass out pumpkins at the Halloween Hoopla. There was approximately 800 people there, but the real surprising thing for me was the adults dressed, almost every adult was dressed in Halloween gear. Let me make that clear. It was just good, it was just good to see that, and it just, it just proves to me the efforts that we do for our, our residents pay off, and, and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver, I thought you were dressed for Halloween tonight.
Yeah, thank you, I'm a trustee.
Trustee Cusmano?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Gillette?
Well, just like to echo the appreciation to our Parks and Rec Department for having a great event, the Halloween Hoopla event, I was unable to attend this year, but I've gone in the past, I know it's very successful. But also extend the appreciation to our trustees that have volunteered their own time and their own money and their own resources to help out. I know Charlie's, you know, of his own resources have provided pumpkins to the kids that attend, free pumpkins, and I know Trustee Lucido has also contributed in form of candy and other, you know, contributions to the event, so it's a group effort. Our Parks and Rec Department does a great job, and it's great to see our trustees are wanting to help out, enthusiastic about helping out. And just finally to comment, this is the, we may be the only, one of the very few entities that I'm aware of that has reduced their insurance costs for two consecutive years, health insurance costs, which is almost unheard of, and still provide outstanding healthcare insurance to our employees. So I want to thank our supervisor and the, and the health, our human resources team for working to look for ways to provide the very best that we can provide and do it at a lower cost to our residents, so congratulate them on that work, thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just congratulations to the Parks and Rec Department for another successful event that 800 of our residents seem to enjoy. Also, I just want to remind our voters that we're less than two weeks away from the November 8 general election. We have less than 50% return on the ballot, so if you did request an absentee ballot, please return it to the returns, to the clerk's office as soon as possible. If you do intend to vote in the polls on Election Day, I encourage you to visit mtvoter.org and verify your precinct information, due to redistricting, your polling location and precinct number may have changed, so please visit that website before you go. And I just want to thank the 400 precinct workers that we trained in the last week and a half. I'm glad that they take their civic responsibilities to elections seriously, and they attended all their training courses that we provided, so I appreciate each and every one of them. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. I also want to congratulate the Parks and Rec Department on the Halloween Hoopla. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, but I heard great things. I'm glad so many of our residents were able to come out and take advantage of it. I want to thank Charlie and his brother in Olive Versad Farm for contributing pumpkins not only to the Halloween Hoopla and to some of our staff here, but Charlie was kind enough to send pumpkins over to the senior center, and the seniors and I made centerpieces out of them, so we had a lot of fun. It was a great day, your, your contribution was well-regarded, so we appreciate that. Thank you, Charlie. I also want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for getting our brand-new pickleball courts and done, and done before the year was out. So if you have not heard yet, over at Macomb Corners, the inline skating rink, the former inline skating rink, has been repurposed and is now pickleball courts and basketball courts. There have been kids out there every day playing basketball, and today, we finally broke in the pickleball court. If you haven't seen the little clip video, I encourage you to go to the Macomb Office's Facebook page, and you can see a little video of me and my less-than-graceful attempt to play pickleball. And not only were they doing all that, but they planted 80 trees, which was acquired through a grant from Consumers Energy through the county, but the Parks and Rec Maintenance Staff, with the help of the DPW staff, planted 80 trees last Thursday, right?
Not little tiny little twigs either, but two-and-a-half-inch, three-inch trunk, full, good, healthy, full-sized trees, and our crew worked through some miserable weather. We had some terrible weather during the planting, but our Public Works Department and our Parks and Rec folks, especially Ken Dalpra, who organized the effort, and Kevin helped out quite a bit in getting his crew helped out, but planted these root balls- quite a bit in getting his crew helped out, but planted these root balls. Some of them were three feet across, three and a half or four feet across for some of them. We got them at Walden, we also got them at Corners Park and a few here at Towne Chapel, but mostly at Corners Park and some at Waldenberg Park.
Great. Great. So the, you know, the improvements at all of our parks continue, and we're looking forward to even more in the months and years to come. So with that, I will wish everybody a happy and very safe Halloween next week. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adjourn the meeting.